We are.
Okay. Welcome, everyone. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Annual notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on January 5th, 2022. In addition, notice of this meeting via Zoom was faxed to the Home News Tribune, an email to the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on April 1st, 2022, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpboro.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on April 1st, 2022, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. As Mayor, I preside over the council meeting, may interrupt, warn or terminate a participant's statement or participation in the virtual meeting if the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided to each participant for public comment or if the statement is abusive, obscene or irrelevant. All right, Tina, since you are a guest here, can I ask you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Okay. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Of the Republic. Which stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty. And justice.
Thank you, Tina. Roll call, please.
Mayor Brill Middler.
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster.
Here.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hale.
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han. Borough Attorney Schmier.
Here.
Borough Administrator Hoover.
Here.
Okay. Are there any questions from council regarding tonight's agenda? Okay, see none. I do just want to note that council will be going into an executive session at the end of our meeting tonight to discuss possible litigation. So I just want to mention that tonight we want to announce that it is National Arab American Heritage Week, and we celebrate all of our residents of Arabic heritage. And I'm in the process of prepare, having staff prepare for me a proclamation to honor them. So just want to make mention of that event this month. Okay. April 2022 Sustainability. Tina, you're on.
Okay. So my name is Tina Weiss House and I'm the Chairperson of Sustainable Highland Park. And this coming month, within a month, we have two very exciting things that I want the community to know. So I'm glad to be here to communicate that. The first thing is that a statewide law called the Plastic Pollution Reduction Act that was passed and signed by Governor Murphy on November 4th, 2020, will be going into effect, the major part of the bill will be going into effect on May 4th, 2022. And the the essence of the bill is that it bans plastic, single-use carryout bags, plastic bags that you get at the point of purchase at a cash register throughout the retail world. And and that it will go, will go some way towards reducing the amount of plastic that the state contributes to the plastic crisis that we are facing. New Jersey's bill is the boldest bill in the country because in grocery stores like our Stop &amp; Shop, that is 2,500 square feet or greater, which that store is, it also bans paper bags. So it forces people to bring reusable bags or to carry out their items in their hands or a cardboard box that they bring or anything else that they want to, a shopping cart, however, they want to bring their purchases home. So, May 4th, it will go into effect and it will be a learning curve for the people in our town and around the state. But since we were an early adopter, since Highland Park had our own bring, bring your own bag, bring your bag ordinance, we're, we're good at it, we learned it, we adopted it and changed our behavior in 2019 when our municipality passed it. And even though we had a long break with COVID, it's been back in, in action. And so we'll be kind of better at kind of making the switch to bringing our own bags. And we're hoping even at the stores where they don't, you know, they can give out paper bags, that people will be bringing their own bags anyway and using them for any purchases in town. So the other thing that we're doing is that for the first time in four years since 2018, we are having an in-person Earth Day event. And that's very exciting because it's, you know, just an event that people, I think, are eager to come to, as well as the fact that we'll be in the middle of the street fair. So Earth Day will have a lot more traffic in Highland Park because it's, it's combining, collaborating with the street fair. And it will be happening on Sunday, May 1st. So in less than a month, from our hours will be 11 to 3:00. And we will be situated in the middle of the street fair on North Third Avenue from Raritan to Dennison. So I call it kind of like an earth zone in the street fair. And the reason that these two things are connected is because we will be educating, rolling out, giving away free reusable bags, as we did in years, you know, when we did our own ordinance. But once again, we'll be handing out free reusable bags and also metal straws. Because part of the Plastic Pollution Reduction Act is to restrict straw usage, plastic straw usage, to those who request, request a straw, but not to be handed out, you know, just as a given. So we encourage people to skip the straw as well as if they want to use it, if they're really, they need a straw, then they should use a metal straw or a non-plastic straw. So those things will be happening at the Earth Day, but I just want to say a little bit more about Earth Day. And because the theme of this year's Earth Day is green stormwater management. So climate impacts central Jersey the most with heavy precipitation events, storms, hurricanes and flooding. And we had that experience just in September, when, past September, when we were struck by Hurricane Ida, eight and a half inches. I don't know how many hours the precipitation occurred in, but it was heavy and extreme and related to climate change. So we, as a result, the whole state is looking to mitigate climate change. And we are, in, in this instance, talking about green stormwater management, which are a lot of things that we've done in the past, like rain barrels. Now we're talking about increasing rain gardens in town, as well as things people can do on their own property, as well as with the, the town as a whole, as a community projects. So, and there'll be EVs, there'll be at, at the, the Earth Day event. There'll be tours of our local rain gardens that already exist. There'll be master gardeners and local musicians. And there'll be sustainable food offering. And the two projects that I just want to mention, and then I, you, I'm done for my minute or so, are that we are starting to collect stories that people have about their Hurricane Ida experience. The town has already sent out an email asking people to participate. But we know that so many people were impacted by that particular storm or the ones before it, Sandy, Irene, Floyd, any of the, or any of the heavy precipitation events that occurred in between. And we'd like to have little oral histories or written histories. And we're, we're collaborating with the public library on doing that. And the other thing that we're doing is we're starting an Adopt a Drain volunteer program, which will kind of community maintenance, volunteer maintenance to our storm drains to keep them clean of trash, of litter, of, you know, pollutants, to the extent that we're capable of that. And all of this is part of green stormwater management. So two events, one is the Statewide Plastic Reduction Act and the other is our coming back post-COVID, kind of. And I'm not sure it's post-COVID, but we're coming back to do outdoor activities. And we're excited about it.
Tina, I want to thank you for, you and your committee for all the hard work you've done over the decades on this. You, you were, you and your team, but you were critical in having Highland Park be one of the leaders in banning plastic bags several years ago. And I know that the, there are several state senators that we've spoken to who have looked at our ordinance when they were thinking of crafting this bill. So thank you very much for all your devotion to Highland Park and for keeping our streams, waterways, and much more, free of plastic. By the way, if anybody saw today's Science section of The Times, there's an article on how plastic is really impacting marine life in our area. So so this is really an important effort. We'll thank you again.
Right. And I want to thank Phil George, who has been a great supporter of Sustainable Highland Park and the actions that we take. So, thank you. And thank you all for passing resolutions that we raised. And thank you for being a very forward, forward council. And we appreciate the support. And, you know, it's nice to live in a town that really gets it. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Bye.
Bye-bye, Tina. All right. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular work session meeting held December 21st, 2021 as distributed?
A move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera.
I'm abstaining because I wasn't there.
Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Okay. We're going to move on to council reports now. And so I am going to call on you in order of how you appear on my screen. And so, Councilwoman Foster, you are up first.
All righty. Thank you, Mayor. I have a few things to mention as it pertains to public safety. We have been getting a lot of reports that the Walter and River Road, that the Crosswater Light is not working. We have a contractor working on this project. And as we all know, we're all affected by supply chain delay. And we are waiting for the battery to come in to fix the problem. But we are aware, it's been, we have a contractor working on it. We're just waiting for the equipment that we need to make the light work to come in. And then, once that goes in, then we should be okay. New initiatives that started by the police department, there is a new initiative started and it's called Conversation with a Cop. And it's going to be that our community, Highland Park Community Center, Officer Brian Omara, he is the one that's going to be leading the charge on this. He's really looking forward to having these conversations. It'll be a one-on-one talk. It could be a talk, it could be a discussion. It could be topics that you were always curious about and wanted was to ask an officer. And he will be available. Any kind of questions that you have, concerns about the community's safety within the borough or any general questions, he is willing and able to answer those questions. For example, I have received a number of young people reaching out to me and they're saying that they're interested in being an officer and how would that work? So that's one good place where you have high school students reaching out saying that they're interested in law enforcement. And they really want to know what is the process and the steps that is needed to become an officer? Some people are, they graduated last year, they're at Middlesex County. Others are still in high school, but they have a great interest. So this is a great opportunity for a conversation with an officer, Officer Omara, that this will be helpful. As I said, it's going to be at the community center. It's going to be from 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Any Tuesdays, the first Tuesday will be April, April 12th. Then the other one will be April 26th. The next time will be March 3rd and then March 31st. So any questions you have, he'll be there to answer those questions. And I think it's a wonderful thing that we have young people in our town who are interested and have questions. And not just only young people, anyone who has questions. But I'm really happy that I have been approached by a number of young people saying, how do I become a police officer? What are the steps that's needed? And asking for some mentorship. And I think this is awesome. The other thing that we're working on coming in July, from July 5th, 11th through the 15th, it's going to be from 8:00 AM in the morning until 4:00 PM. And it's fifth through 12th grade Highland Park students are eligible to register. And space is still available for those who want to join our academy this year. So space is available at Highland Park Youth Academy. And it's coming in July. So if you're interested, you can reach out to, the phone number is 732-572-5732, 3800 extension 4262. That's Officer Omara, again, who is interested in. Anyone who is interested can reach out to him at this number. April is distracted drive for months, so we all need to be careful as we are driving wherever it is that we're going. We need to make awareness and, you know, just slow down for a minute, take it easy. So we all, everyone can get home safely and we get to our destination safely. So the Highland Park Police Department is going to be doing a campaign. It's not just here in Highland Park, it's a statewide campaign. But we're going to, our police department will be participating in this event. And as you guys are familiar, Click It or Ticket, so that's coming. Or Drive Silver or, or Get Pulled Over. Those are the two campaigns that are coming. So please, take a moment. Let's all get back home safely. Let's all get to where we're going safely. Just a few more things that you guys are going to see this week coming out on the Highland Park Police Department Facebook page. And in our little news snippet letter, it's going to be the kind of stops that was made and stops and calls that were answered by our police department. So for example, from January to March, the police department answered 7,113 calls for service. And it was only two. Over the course of that time, from January through March, officers, there was two individuals that use of force was used. But you'll see the report and it's not as use of force, like I'm throwing you down and that kind of thing. But you'll see when the report comes out, what was involved. And if you have any questions, again, you can reach out to our police department. There's a lot more that you guys can read as the report comes out on our page tomorrow and, and on the Facebook page, the Borough page and our news page. And it talks about traffic stop, how many stops the officers conducted, how it was done. And more details are there. We had our community forum last month. And we had quite a few questions that were submitted. We answered as much as we could. For those who did not get an opportunity to see that tape, they can go right over to our face, our, our Facebook page and our YouTube channel to see it. And that's my report. I thank you all so much. Mayor, turn it back over to you.
Councilwoman, could you please just repeat the dates in April and May that people can take advantage of conversation with the cop?
Yes, conversation with a cop is going to be from, it's, it's at our Highland Park Community Center. From 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM, it will be Tuesdays, April 12th and April 26th. Then from there, it goes to May, May 3rd to May 31st. And any questions that you ever want to ask or need or curious about, you can stop by and get that one-on-one conversation going. So the Officer Omara is really excited to do this program. So please do reach out to him and ask any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. Councilman Matt Hirsch, do you have a report?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. I was going to mention the last, but sometime after Councilwoman Foster, I spoke, she and I touched base earlier today and I asked her if it was okay if I just heaped praise on, on her and Chief Abrams for that public safety forum. It was, it was just, you know, if, if people don't watch, yeah, please do, because there's just a ton of information on there and a lot of questions are answered. So it's just terrific. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Foster. Okay, so with that said, hi. I'm Matt Hirsch. I chair the Borough's Arts and Recreation Committee. Just to start off, please mark your calendars. I've said it before and I will say it again. The Highland Park, New Brunswick Independence Day fireworks will take place on Sunday, July 3rd, with a rain date of Thursday, July 7th, right here at a fully refurbished and restored Donaldson Park. You probably have seen some improvements, reconstruction of the, of, of the playground equipment currently underway at Donaldson. The county is, because that's a county park, Highland Park, Mayor Gell Brim, Brim Middler and, and I and the council have worked closely with the, with Middlesex County on making sure that the park is restored and repaired after occurring, after incurring significant damage from Hurricane Ida. And those repairs are currently underway and we anticipate it all being completed by June, which at this point seem, you know, depending on weather, it could happen, you know, even before that. But don't quote me on that. But it is underway and we're really excited to have that asset back in the fold because it was, it was very much missed by a lot of residents and also parents of young children. Tonight, you'll see several items that illustrate the council's continued commitment to invest and reinvest in Highland Park. One of these items includes an ordinance that appropriates $2.5 million to restore and repair the J. Dackelman Field, both the field and the track at Polly Castro Stadium. These improvements, along with other much-needed upgrades to lighting, are a result of advocacy with our state representatives. And these costs include a New Jersey Department of Community Affairs grant in the amount of $750,000. Thank you to Mayor Gell Bril Middler, Senator Pat Deignan, Assemblymembers Sterling Stanley and Rod Karabincheck, Highland Park Public Schools and DCA Commissioner Lieutenant Governor Sheila Oliver for collaborating on this essential investment. Our recreation complex is one of her many jewels in Highland Park that serves the entire community. And I look forward to a sustained and targeted campaign to improve all of the borough's municipal passive and active recreational assets for families, children, seniors and all individuals who love being outside. Promise there's much more to come. Windows of Understanding. I was honored to represent Highland Park last Friday for the closing reception of Windows of Understanding. This is the annual public art campaign that displays works of art from area artists in storefronts and public spaces in New Brunswick, Highland Park, Matutian and South Plainfield. The New Brunswick Community Arts Council, Mason Grove School of the Arts at Rutgers University, the Highland Park Arts Commission, Highland Park Arts Commission, the Matutian Arts Council and the South Plainfield Cultural Arts Commission partnered on this initiative that unites New Jersey artists, organizations and businesses to promote awareness and engagement around social justice issues impacting local communities. Thank you to Mayor Gell Bril Middler, Mayor James Cahill of New Brunswick and Mayor Jonathan Bush of Matutian for facilitating these efforts in their towns. Also, many, many, many thanks to the inimitable John Merron, our fearless leader on the Highland Park Arts Commission for bringing the drive, the artistic vision and the networking skills to make this happen. This was Windows of Understanding's fifth year and its focus revolved around social issues such as climate change, economic justice, protest to policy and public, and public health. To see these issues presented through artists' eyes was just nothing short of profound. It was at the Hungarian Cultural Center and it was a terrific crowd. And we got to see up close some of the, you know, some, some of the highlighted works. And you can still view items from this important exhibit. There is a website, so you can take a virtual tour. Go to www-windowsofunderstanding.org. Speaking of the Arts Commission and public art, the Gorilla Art Club, a collab between the commission and the Recreation Department, kicked off today. This is an art club for Highland Park kids that's going to do some surprise art projects around town as a way of bringing our community together in a fun, colorful way. For seasons or holidays, we'll select a project that all members will be invited to create. Projects will have an educational awareness component to them, like helping the environment. And we'll be asking local artists to share their talent and lead projects. Then on a selected day, we'll display our art all over town with permission. Thank you to the, again, to the Arts Commission and specifically Commissioner Nikki Gonzalez and and Kimberly McGraw at the, at the Recreation Department for ushering in this tremendously innovative project. We need more gorilla art in town. Lord knows, we need more gorilla art in town. But then check out the Gorilla Art Project as well as a whole, a whole host of other programming that the Rec Department is spearheading right now. It's, they, they have a lot of programs for adults, for families and for children. Go to www.hielenparkrec.com. And that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Councilwoman Canavera, you're up next.
Thank you. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, which strives to be the voice of victims of sexual abuse and violence. The mission is to create where awareness about sexual violence worldwide and educate communities on how to prevent it. If you or anyone you know is experiencing any form of sexual abuse, please report it to the police. Sexual assault is a crime and no one should take it lightly. Do not be afraid to speak out if it is happening to you. The Rape Abuse and Insect National Network Hotline is 1-800-656-HOPE. The Commission for Universal Access would also like to remind everyone that April is National Autism Awareness Month. The Autism Society founded the event to increase awareness and spark change in schools, communities and medical facilities and businesses. The Community Food Pantry is open the second and fourth Thursday from 9:00 AM to 10:45 and from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And the Saturday following the Thursday from 9:30 to 10:30. Every month, donations can be made using their Amazon wishlist. The Highland Park Gives a Hoot Food Pantry is every Tuesday at Zone 16 Center from 10:00 AM until 11:00 AM. Donations can be made by making a check payable to the Borough Hall with a memo that it's for the Highland Park Gives a Hoot. Between these two programs, we're still serving over 300 families. Highland Park Gives a Hoot is also delivering fresh produce to our senior housing center every week. And the Mental Health Commission wants to remind anybody with a mental health crisis, please reach out for help. You can call Rutgers University Behavioral Helpline at 855-515-5700. The Raritan Bay Medical Center Hotline at 732-442-3794. Or text HOME to 741-741. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Um, as mentioned last month during my report that the Middlesex County Board of Taxation is requiring uh, Highland Park this year to uh, complete the reevaluation for the 2023 tax year. So what happens during the reevaluation visit to your home? The reevaluation firm personnel will visit your property to gather information and they must present a photo ID. They will physically inspect the interior and exterior of each property, take photos and measurements of the outside of the property. The square foot of living space is calculated, also noted are basements and attics, and if unfinished or so. Um, your heating and cooling system, the condition of the structure, the number and condition of kitchen bathrooms, bedrooms, and additional amenities such as porches, decks, uh, garage, garages, fireplaces, pools, saunas, um, and outbuildings. Um, and so later this month, I'll also, I have a few more announcements as well, but anyone that has um, any questions or want additional information, um, you guys, you can definitely um, email me as well. I just wanted to give that small snippet as we go further into this process. And as many of the council members uh, mentioned tonight, April is many months and many uh, recognitions for this month, but as it relates to my portfolio, I'd like to remind everyone that April 18th is the tax deadline date. I know, we do not, we hate when that time comes around for the year, but um, April 18th is the tax date for this year. So, and that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I, I would just add, um, and I've asked our Communications Department to work closely with you in um, forwarding information on a regular basis about what the tax assessment is and um, Harry Glazer will be working uh, with you on a, on a plan that he's putting together. Okay, Councilman Matt Hale, do you have a report?
I do, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Um, so I just wanted to remind everybody that the Farmer's Market is up and running as of last Friday. Um, it's our earliest opening ever and we're looking to have a great year, so please remember to come out on Friday afternoons and support the Farmer's Market. Um, as you heard earlier, Earth Day is coinciding with our reemergence of the street fair this year on May 1st. So you'll have the street fair and um, uh, the, the Earth Day celebrations as well as the 5K run. So all of those are coming back, which is fantastic and very excited about that. So all information about um, all of those events, you can find it um, mainstreethp.org. Uh, and um, there are some sponsorship opportunities. If you are interested um, in sponsoring the 5K race, please immediately um, go to mainstreet.org um, and jump on those opportunities um, to sponsor some of the prizes for that. Um, so um, so there's that. Uh, I also, as, as many of you, as most of you are aware, the Borough's Town Tables were not um, reinstalled on South Third and North Fourth as we had previously announced. In the weeks leading up to the announcement, um, closure, we believe that we had a pathway to temporarily close these streets from April 1st and November 30th. Well, we worked with the NJDOT on our major access permit, which would allow us to permanently close those streets. On Friday of last week, the same day that we wanted to install the uh, the closures, we learned that the NJDOT would not approve the interim or slash temporary closures that we had expected and hoped for. So instead, we're going to continue to move ahead with a renewed sense of urgency on securing our major access permit for closing these streets from the DOT. Among the next steps in that process is an introduction of a town ordinance on the street's closure, which will include a public hearing um, on that process. And in addition, and on a parallel track, we will continue with the needed engineering work already underway in support of that application. So while this news is disappointing, and it is disappointing, the Borough is going to continue to do our best to make what we have as, as the best that we can make it. The Borough will be partnering with Main Street Highland Park and local businesses to expand and bring much-needed improvements to the existing outdoor seating areas on South Third and North Fourth, as well as Wackowitz Pavilion on Raritan Avenue. These upgrades and additions will be rolled out over the next coming week, so please stay tuned for future announcements. In addition, um, we do have the authority to periodically close the streets for 48-hour periods. And again, we'll be working with Main Street to identify a number of those 48-hour periods where closing the streets can help support existing and ongoing Main Street activities. I just wanted to apologize for the false start. We realize how important the town tables are to the health, the well-being, and the economic vitality of downtown. We're working to make them a reality in an illegal and safe way as soon as possible. Um, and then just to, to, to wrap up, I know the mayor is gonna mention and give tribute to, to some people later on. Um, we've recently lost some special residents in Highland Park, but I just wanted to, to add my heartfelt sadness at the loss of Bernie Sloan. I never spoke to him, I never met him, and I don't really know much about him. But I do know that more than just about anybody else who participates in our various town Facebook groups, through his photography, Mr. Sloan brought little reminders of the beauty of life and the beauty of Highland Park to us every single day. And that's going to be missed. Um, in pages that are often filled with acrimony and anger, his was a, a nice respite. And so, thank you, Mr. Sloan. Um, we're gonna miss seeing those beauty breaks on your pa, on our pages and we're gonna miss you. So I just wanted to add my um, condolences on that. And I know the mayor will, will bring some more of that as well. So that's my report. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council President Phil George, do you have a report?
Uh, I have a brief report, Mayor. Um, uh, Councilwoman Kim Cho Han mentioned that April is a, a month for a lot of, this is the month to honor. Um, this is also a volunteer appreciation week in the state. Um, we would not be able to do what we do without our volunteers across the board, from Public Works to the Arts Commission uh, to Sustainable Highland Park. Uh, we had one of our uh, leading volunteers, Tina Wisehouse, speak tonight. Um, and just wanna uh, reach out to all of them and, and say heartfelt thank you. I actually find them one of the more valuable audiences to, to learn things from. Uh, to, to sit and listen and uh, be concerned at all of the different meetings I attend for the volunteers. Ms., Tina mentioned that uh, May 4th is the start of the plastic bag ban. Um, New Jersey's is very radical. Um, I want all the residents to understand, it'll be on the Facebook page, it'll be on our, our website front and center that the ban is to both plastic and paper bags, so you're going to need to bring your own bags. I imagine there will be some discomfort and some mix-ups as we start. There were when we started the plastic bad, bad, bag ban before, about six months before the pandemic started. Um, but she also mentioned that Highland Park was in the lead. We attended a number of meetings with the drafts people in the Senate and the uh, Assembly when the state bill was being put together and a lot of Highland Park's ideas are incorporated into, into uh, the state. So we do have some experience in it, but the big thing is that uh, both paper and plastic are banned, so we need, going to need to bring, uh, keep your bags in the car, keep them ready, uh, and be ready for the transition and about, but um, some really good news. Um, working with um, the Superintendent of DPW and the Borough Administrator at Public Works, uh, and the mayor, we, and PSE and G, it's Middlesex Water. We seem to have a relatively complete list of the streets that are going to be done. Um, and because of the major repairs that went on to our gas lines and also to our water lines, we are getting a lot of, of those streets redone. I think that the Borough Administrator, we have more news, but it is on the Borough's website. If you go to Highland Park and then Departments, then Public Works, and then Street Maintenance, there is a relatively complete list of the streets to be done from what block to what block, including whether they're going to be uh, fully paved or half-paved. Just to remind everybody that paving is just as messy as tearing the roads up. So we're going to be going through some real growing pains as we get this done. However, when we reach the end of 2022 paving season, which is about November, and then we could move into the spring, which is gonna be a carryover of 2023, we're going to have a lot of new roads redone, including ones that we would not have been able to get to for a while. So um, I'd encourage you to take a look at that website. Again, it's Highland Park, Departments, Public Works, and then Streets, and there's a complete list. That may be subject to a little bit of changes, but we think right now it's, it's pretty well solid. Um, with regard to Public Works, um, with Council, uh, Councilwoman Canavera and Councilman Hirsch, um, we uh, had been, had been addressing the overall trash problem. Some of the issues have been resolved. We're working on some additional with the Superintendent of Public Works and the Borough Administrator on some expansions, uh, especially with the availability of the new street sweeper, which is actually working. It actually picks stuff up and it actually works a lot better. I know I've tailed it a couple of times of trying to cage or ride it and I really want to drive it. Um, but uh, we'll, we'll see what happens because it's important that the Borough policymakers understand how these things work with, you know, boots on the ground. So that when we talk about money for them or making them work or getting people to use them, we need to understand how that actually really happens. So that's why I've gone out snowplowing, garbage canning, down in the sewers, so we understand all these kinds of things on a practical level, but we are going to be trying to add some more uh, in particular um, uh, in some of the commercial districts to try and address trash, so we are working on that. Um, so a couple of, that, that's about all I have to report. The library is um, making an optional ma, mask program, however, from 10 to 1 on Fridays and Saturdays, masks are mandatory. And that's to suit the particular populations with uh, children's activities and also senior activities. Um, the inside repair works are just about done. We should be getting back to full opening. Uh, library's been open, but not the whole facility because of the ongoing repairs. Tonight, we have the second reading of the ordinance uh, allocating our 50% of these uh, to the state grant. Will give us 900, almost $950,000 total uh, for massive improvements to the library. Uh, that is managed under state programming. It takes a lot longer. Uh, but we're, the library board is working with their architect to implement that. Um, a couple of events. Um, the CPAC organization, it's an organization that lends support to um, the parent or caregiver of autistic children. Is holding a fundraiser at Pinos uh, with music on, uh, I believe it's Saturday night. Um, or Sunday night, I'm sorry. And um, there'd be more information on their website. It's at their annual fundraiser to try and raise money. Uh, they support the support groups uh, without which uh, many things can't happen. And on a final note of uh, really good news, uh, Councilman Hirsch and I attended the soft opening of uh, Mr. Pie's uh, Sushi House on um, on a Friday night last. Uh, some of the presentations, there were about 20 of us at the table. A soft opening is a, in the restaurant business is um, before you open, you pretend you're open to see how things are going to work for the first time. And some of the things worked phenomenally and other of the things, uh, it'll be a little too now. But that's, that's the fun of it is being part of, of that opening. Uh, Councilman Hirsch and I were there uh, a good three hours, actually. The presentations were stunning. The food was literally spectacular. We're actually serving in bowls of crystal ice with lights underneath. It's like, you just, you, you, you can't get any better and this is Highland Park, so uh, welcome to, to a new restaurant. Um, and uh, Matt and I had an enjoyable time with the rest of the table. That was a good time. And that's my um, announcement for today.
Thank you, Council President. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
I will just briefly do a picture, can be worth a thousand words, hopefully, if I can find the right window. I would like to share because I promised the Public Works Committee to have the road, street, street map sorted to some extent uh, in time for the council meeting. So I wanted to share with you, if you go to our website at hpborough.com, although of course I'm not able to find the right window. Um, we were, you will see a map, which hopefully, I can find this map, hold on one second, will show you the extent of all the work that is coming this year as well as next year. Um, it's, it's really quite, uh, I, I knew it, but I don't know if everybody can see my screen. Um, you get a sense, the yellow are road projects that we did last year. Red are Borough-driven road projects that will happen this year. Blue will be projects for next year. And then in orange and green are the PSE and G roads, orange being full width and green being half width. So you can see there's gonna be a lot, and I don't want to forget to point out, we also have our Woodbridge Avenue project that the county and, and the Borough are partnering on, on the upper portions of Woodbridge Avenue. So that's happening this year as well. So this is quite a bit of work. We are going to come back to you with more of a schedule and an implementation plan, so not trying to alarm anybody. But it's also really exciting to see kind of some of these projects come together and hopefully uh, in addition to having safer gas line infrastructure, we will also have smoother and safer roadways uh, as well. And I should also mention the overlay for the Safe Foods to School projects. They may be hard to see, but those are intersection improvements uh, that we will be making most likely either late this year or early next year when this weather allows. So um, all this, as uh, Council President George said, uh, is available on the website, both the map, our PDF, as well as just a listing of all the roads, so if you're, you know, whichever is your comfort zone. And as uh, Phil mentioned, there, there might be a potential on the PSE and G list for a shift more likely to be going from half to full because they're still making holes as our DPW Superintendent keeps telling me. So the extents may, may expand based on their kind of completion of the project. So that information's all available on the website. I encourage you to look at it. If you have any questions, uh, please let us know. We will be, of course, making our annual application come July for our next allocation of state aid money. We're gonna be looking heavily at complimenting or, you know, bookending uh, areas that need attention, especially nearby some of these other improvements. So anyway, I, I leave you with that, but I, I just wanted to encourage everybody to check it out because I took a little time putting that map together, so I just wanted to make sure you knew it was there.
Okay, thank you. Um, Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
A report, Madam Mayor.
All right, um, so as you can probably hear from my voice, I'm losing it. Um, so I want to thank the council members for doing such detailed reports today um, that allow me to just stick to one major topic. Um, so all I really want to talk about tonight is remembering three unique men, um, all Highland Park residents who we lost uh, since our last council meeting. First, Eric Weinberg was known and loved by so many of us in Highland Park. Eric and his family own the loft and stores along Raritan Avenue. But so, so many of our young men who grew up in Highland Park will most likely remember him for his days encouraging young baseball players in town. Eric was a big man with a full loving heart and deep care about our downtown community. Next, even those who never met Bernie Sloan in person felt like they knew him. He enriched all our lives with incredible photos of nature in and around Highland Park. And he shared these photos with all of us on Facebook. And he shared these photos with all of us on Facebook. Bernie will be remembered for his smile and his keen eye of nature, whether from his back porch or in and around Donaldson or Johnson Parks. Keith Bull loved his community of Highland Park. Keith was a gifted artist and curator at our neighboring Zimley Art Museum. He was an avid bicyclist. His memory should be a siren call to encourage us all to support safe pedestrian and cycling in and around our community and throughout New Jersey. Let's take one moment to remember these three fine gentlemen. Thank you. Okay. We're up to our first public participation. Total time allotted is twenty-one minutes. Three minutes per maximum per speaker. Comments are limited at this session to items that are on the agenda. If you want to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, please do so at the second public comment session later in the meeting. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has lapsed. She will give you a warning when there is thirty seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three-minute mark to make sure that everyone has time to speak. As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad or select the raise hand button in this application. Please press star six to unmute yourself. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your telephone number. Please begin by letting us know the first and last name as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on the agenda, please press star nine or the raise hand button now.
All right, it looks like, oh, sorry, Mayor.
It's okay. Borough Administrator, do we have any hands?
We do. We have fourteen attendees at this point and three hands raised. First, on the list here would be Carl Prey. Please state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's Mary Forsberg. I think that my my question, my issue has to do with what you're talking about now. It has to do with Sustainable Highland Park. When in 2020, when the borough announced its plan to redevelop tracks A, B, C, and D, they had a three-to-five parking, three-to-five-story parking garage on the corner of Raritan, Denison, and North Third. I sent an email to Sustainable, to Sustainable Highland Park and asked them to find some information on whether parking garages are actually sustainable and what that means for Highland Park's position as a sustainable community. I received an email back that said that they would do it, but they never have done it. So I'm I'm still wondering about whether parking garages are sustainable and I'm not expecting you to answer that question necessarily, but I'd like someone to answer it. And I'd like to actually hook that into the parking study that was done, that is supposed to have been done by Level G and what the status of that is, because I'd like to see what that parking study says. And I'd also like to know whether Level G was asked to to comment on the sustainability issue. That's all I have for this session. I have something else I'll ask later.
All right, Borough Administrator or Borough Attorney, would either of you like to talk about the status of the parking study? And Level G?
I'm probably in a better position, Mayor. I I did have a meeting with our consultant, Level G. He walked me through where he was. He's got a rough draft that I don't have in my hand yet, but he kind of walked me through kind of where he was. The intent is to try to finalize the kind of first chunk of that, which is the baseline analysis of existing parking conditions this month. There will be presentations of this plan made, you know, by him once we think it's ready for public review and comment. But I, right now, it's still in the draft phase. We also have a survey we want to get out for a few weeks, soliciting some feedback from the public on parking strategies, et cetera. So I would encourage everybody to keep an eye out for that. Solicitation will be an electronic survey.
Okay, thank you. And Borough Administrator, do we have any other hands?
Yes, let me work my way through the list. Looks like phone number ending four, 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 five is next. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Lois Leving here. You mentioned lots of roadwork up and coming. Well, when public service was doing the digging at Inza next to Quick Check, I took shortcut, went down Inza off Woodbridge Avenue, and lo and behold, I could not go left. I could not go right. I was forced to drive into, what is that, Orchard Gardens? No one could go left and right because both streets were closed and being, or that street, whatever it is, it's not Carson, but whatever that one is, Ninth or something, no. But so I turned around in the apartment parking lot, went back down Inza to Woodbridge Avenue. So, you know, a few work ahead, construction ahead, when when we're trying to zip home or go see someone, drop something off. No outlet today. Some sort of signage would help everyone and cut back on all the fumes that we put into the air for no reason. When you get to the consent agenda, please, fifteen C, would someone explain or read about the lead service replacement program? And Sustainable Highland Park, how about the mountains and mountains of furniture that go out for bulk trash? Usually very good, very nice apartments. Also, you don't see it, I do. Someone moves out at the end of the month, entire new IKEA bedroom, bathroom, dining room, it goes in the trash. You're burying huge amounts of beautiful things. There has to be a way to recycle, whether through the county, let the guy standing on the corner asking for money, let them come and pick up or be hired to pick up to go to a building and and now give it to the people who are coming in as immigrants. Give it to people burnt out. Sell it, whatever it is. There's got, these are huge pieces we should be recycling. That's all I have now pertaining to the agenda. Thank you.
Um, Borough Administrator, Ms. Leving mentioned the replacement of the lead service lines. Do you want to talk about that now? So it's closer to when she asked her question.
Sure. The, I believe that she was, I didn't have a chance to skip ahead to the consent. I'm assuming she's looking at the item to award a contract to CDM Smith, an engineering firm. They have a lot of experience working with utilities and municipal utilities nationwide, but also in the state of New Jersey on lead service line, letting copper regulations. And in, there's a federal set of regulations, and then there's a New Jersey set of regulations. The New Jersey ones are more strict than the federal ones, but we'll be complying with both. And the first steps and that, the proposal that's being voted on through the consent agenda is to help us refine and perfect our inventory. We we have some pretty good records, but there's some verification that has to go on, and there's a specific methodology the state wants to see for that verification. They're going to assist us with that process going through so that we get a much more accurate count of actual lead service lines. As I've reported previously, we have forty-seven known according to our records, but I'll tell you, we've been doing verifications with those property owners, and many of them have been replaced already by the customers. So part of this process is updating the records to reflect what's actually in the ground literally. And so there's a kind of a template that they're going to work with us on to finish that inventory. It's going to be a living document. We're going to learn as projects come and go, but we have a lot of information we need to get to. There's a regulatory deadline of July something. I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the on the exact date where we have to submit an updated inventory, but also, and this is the second part of their proposal, is a replacement program plan. And so essentially, once we have better information on the number of service lines, we can then establish our plan for how we're going to replace them within the ten-year deadline that the state's established. That will also include some ideas about funding and so forth, because we need to get a handle on the order of magnitude of the number of service lines that may need to be replaced in order for the borough to make informed decisions about that program. There is information on the website regarding the lead service line replacement program. If you go to Water and Sewer, there's a dropdown that says lead in drinking water. So anybody who wants to kind of see where we are in the process is a pretty good summary there. And again, I would always encourage anybody to reach out to me directly. If you have any concerns about, if you got the letter and you have concerns and you haven't already reached out, or if you didn't get the letter and you have concerns, please reach out. I've been fielding calls very successfully, and I'm happy to do that. But this contract will enable us to verify the inventory and get us, keep us on the path towards compliance with all these regulations.
Thank you. That's a good explanation. Okay, Borough Administrator, is there another?
I just see one other hand, fifteen attendees. MSB F R C T. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Oh, hi. This is Mary Botian, seven oh nine Madison. And I have a question regarding ordinance twenty-two, two oh four seven. And what I'm looking at, when I went through the agenda and I see the ordinance, it doesn't actually list the terms of the agreements. And Terry was very kind and provided copies of the lease agreements to me and indicated that they're not listed in the resolution or their borough, excuse me, or the ordinance themselves. They have to be requested. So a couple of things. One, in looking at the the agreements, they each show that the terms would be for ten dollars for each of these locations. And, you know, the question isn't whether or not, you know, what the price should be. You know, both of these, I totally agree with the language that they provide valuable services to the community. In particular, I'm really happy to see the the watershed partnership come in to monitor and preserve our environmental resources is just essential. And in particular, now more than ever, is Highland Park is involving itself with the marijuana industry, which is terrible for the environment. It wreaks havoc on the soil and in particular on the watersheds. So I'm really glad to see them having a presence in Highland Park. As far as the lease for the the church property, again, it's listed as ten dollars, but the fair market value in the lease is listed as sixteen thousand eight hundred. So the question isn't so much, you know, what are we charging or why are we charging these amounts? But why are we not listing the actual terms of the lease agreement when we're posting the ordinances or the resolutions that they relate to? And I asked that as well. I I didn't receive an answer back to that. So the question would be, you know, who makes the decision as to why the lease agreements are not included when the resolution or the ordinance is presented? And, you know, instead of having them be required to be specifically asked for and, you know, in the future, could you please include that type of information? Because we're all, when it says borough property is the borough of Highland Park, that really is all of us. So it really should be readily available and it would seem to make sense to list it in the actual resolution or ordinance, so we can all see all the information at that time. So are there any objections to doing that in the future?
Borough Attorney, I'll turn to you on that.
Madam Mayor, the resolution, when we usually have agreements like this, always indicates that the actual agreements are on file with a municipal clerk and can be inspected at any time. So we usually do that because these are relatively short leases. We oftentimes have much longer documents, and rather than reproduce those and post them and attach them to the packet, we usually will make that reference. And that's been my experience with a number of municipalities, and I I think that works fine. So we can certainly do the the shorter ones if you'd like us to do that, but as a rule, the clerk and I will simply indicate, as this one does, that it's on file, it's readily available, and can be inspected.
Could I, could I say this?
Excuse me, Mary. So Borough Attorney, so then any resident can actually see the actual agreement online? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I I don't know if we posted online, and we can certainly do that, but the answer would be that it's in the clerk's office. And as Mrs. Botian indicates, you can contact the clerk's office, and we would be happy to send it out. But usually, it's just a shorthand way to refer to a much longer document. But we always tell people in the resolution, in this one and others, how you can find it, and we're glad to provide it.
Okay, good, thank you.
Dale, could I just say this then? Could that also please be listed in the ordinance? Because, for example, if somebody's not on the meeting in which the resolution appeared, but they're on the meeting in which the ordinance appears, they would not know to go ask the clerk for that information. So just to be consistent, it should be in the ordinance as well.
So I'm not sure that all all resolutions don't become ordinances. But that is certainly something that we could ask the attorney to look at. I'm not quite sure. And in this case, would this become an ordinance?
Well, in in this case, there's a local land and buildings law in New Jersey, and when a public entity is going to either sell or lease their property, you have to go through an ordinance, and that's why we're doing an ordinance. The majority of these agreements that we do appear on the consent agenda revert to over resolution because there's no requirement to publish it in an ordinance. So that's why we're doing the ordinance for this local land and buildings law compliance.
Got it. Okay, and Borough Administrator, did I see your hand go up for a second there?
No, I guess I just wanted to point out that it it worked because Ms. Botian did contact the clerk and myself, and I forwarded the lease agreements, you know, indicated in the resolution. So it can work, but we can certainly discuss alternatives, which is in accordance with the Borough Attorney advises.
Okay. Do we have any other hands up?
Uh, no, I don't see any, Mayor.
All right, in that case, we'll move on. Can you all hear me okay? Okay. Clerk, could you please report advertising the bond ordinance for the recreation complex improvements for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Bond ordinance providing for the construction of various recreation complex improvements by and in the borough of Highland Park in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating two million fifty thousand, therefore inclusive of a New Jersey Department of Community Affairs grant in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand and a contribution from the Highland Park Board of Education in the amount of six hundred and fifty thousand and authorizing the issuance of six hundred and fifty thousand bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the cost thereof, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay. May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved. Back in.
Okay, any public hearing on this?
Just a reminder, this is up for comments specific to the bond ordinance for rec complex improvements. So I'm going to call on, it looks like I have two hands raised. I'm guessing it's it's MSB F R C T. I'm guessing it's it was MSB F R C T, I'm guessing Mary Botian. Mary, did you want to speak on this?
Oh, no, actually, that was a leftover, but.
Oh, I didn't know your hand, I apologize.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
All right.
Anybody else?
I do see another hand there. Milagros Aguayo. Please state your name and address for the record. I'm assuming you want to speak on the bond ordinance regarding rec complex improvements. Ms. Aguayo, did you want to speak on this?
Did you hear me now?
I can.
Okay, no, not yet, later.
All right, keep your hand down until the item that you want to speak to. We've got to go through a few public hearings.
Can you do it?
Yep. Okay, no, no hands raised, Mayor.
May I have a motion to adopt, reject or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Hey, Clerk, could you please report on advertising the capital ordinance? For improvements to the Highland Park Public Library for consideration of passage on final reading by title.
Capital ordinance providing for improvements to the Highland Park Public Library. In the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, in the amount of nine hundred forty-four thousand nine hundred twenty-nine dollars. Was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
All right, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
All right, then we're going into a public hearing on this now. Does anyone have any comments? On the capital ordinance for the library improvements?
Mayor, I see fifteen attendees at this time and are no hands raised.
All right, then we're going to move on. May I have a motion to adopt, to reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster.
Long overdue, yes.
Councilman George.
Just a reminder, although the bond ordinance is for the full amount. Of the state grant, we guarantee half of that and we have agreed to guarantee half that since the program started. This is the second round, which we finally won. So the borough's contribution is actually half of the stated bond amount, the way the state requires it is. We issue as well as the the library for the full amount. When and as it's administered, we'll we'll contribute our bonding part, I vote yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Hey. Clerk, could you please report on advertising the ordinance authorizing leases for two twelve Raritan and one oh one Raritan Avenue? Having you for consideration. Of passage on final reading by title.
An ordinance pursuant to the New Jersey Local Lands and Building Law NJSA forty A colon twelve dash fourteen C. Authorizing leases for two twelve Raritan Avenue and one oh one Raritan Avenue by the Borough of Highland Park was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. And affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Is there any public comment?
Mayor, I do see a couple of hands raised. Looks like Carl Prey is up first. Please state your name and address.
Mary Forsberg, three seventeen Denison Street. I just want to say that I agree with Mary Botian. I think that. Transparency is a very important issue and I think that I don't have any problem with that, the, you know, the. Buildings being leased to the church or to the watershed authority. But I do, I do take issue with the fact that if it really is true that the lease for the. I guess for the church property is sixteen thousand dollars and we are leasing it for ten dollars a month, ten dollars a year. I didn't catch that part. I think that as taxpayers in Highland Park, I think we really need to know, you know, you're buying this land and. And you're taking it off the tax rolls. So I totally agree with Mary Botian and I think you need to be more transparent about what you are doing with property that you are buying.
Okay, thank you.
Looks like phone number ending four 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 five. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Lois Webbing, North Second Avenue. Okay, so the rental on the old gun shop. Is that, I know I have a lease, but I forgot if that includes the vacant lot where Anton next door, his tenants were parking. Apparently got noticed by the police that they should not park there any longer. I don't know if that's an insurance issue. And yes, there's barking for these tenants from Anton's to go all the way over to the old Charlie Brown's surface parking lot. Apparently it's not happening. I'm hearing from businesses, a business again. That long term parking is occurring, blocking the deliveries. And I wonder, what is it? The watershed authority is now renting Bergen Auto. Is that true? They're going to do boat work or boat building? And back to the gun shop, you might want to know that for the last, well, this is a little bit off topic. Last, this week, twice, today was the second time, two, three days ago, somebody was throwing rocks, very strong. Breaking the rocks against the graffiti in the back there. I was almost ready to call the police, but glad that they changed their mind after ten, fifteen minutes and run away. And also today, we had four kids instead of three or students or whoever they were. And they took turns kicking in the bottom door, the basement, the furnace and the back door that's well boarded up. And when they, two of them were going, I walked over my property, not there. And gave a yell, four words, hey, that's government property, which is so much easier. Chief, if you're listening, than calling in and giving your name and hold on and it's tough for the police. To call, it's it's an inquisition. And mostly because the questions are, what's the address of the gun shop at the back? I said, dead end of Denison. There's no address back here. It's as you're going into the apartments. Anyhow, that. That is a deterrent if you want people to participate. So if the borough could please paint the back, unless that's part of this rental agreement, just paint the back wall over the old graffiti. And take a look back there once in a while. Thank you, that's all I'll say about it.
Thank you for raising that, Lois. And Chief, I think we should just put it on your radar that these things are happening back there. Okay. Any other public comment on this?
Mayor, I do not see any hands.
All right. Then may I have? A motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Okay, do we have a motion and a second?
I can't hear.
Okay, it looks like Tara. Motioned. And. And Elsie seconded.
And that's to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Correct.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
We need to do the resolution now. We missed the motion to take up the ordinance on final reading. So that was Tara and Elsie. And now we're going to adopt or reject the resolution to adopt and advertise ordinance on final reading by title.
Okay, thank you for that. May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman George.
I'm staying.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Hey. Moving on to ordinances requiring a first reading. Clerk, could you please report introduction of cap rate exception ordinance for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
Calendar year ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits. And to establish a cap bank NJSA forty A colon four dash forty-five point fourteen. Has been introduced in writing by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title? So moved. Did you get that, Borough Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera.
You have to unmute.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Clerk, could you please report on introduction of amending the wrecker license for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance of the borough of Highland Park, county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey. Concerning regulations for wrecker operators and amending the code of the borough of Highland Park has been introduced in writing by the Public Safety Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
All right, may I have a motion to adopt, to reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Clerk, can you please report on introduction of boards, committees and commissions? Ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance of the borough of Highland Park and Middlesex County amending chapter nine of the code of the borough of Highland Park. By adding there to article twenty-five, reconstituting the Shade Tree Advisory Committee has been introduced in writing by council as a whole for consideration of passage. On first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to the resolutions that require separate readings. For twenty-two ninety-eight, introduction of twenty twenty-two municipal budget by title and schedule. Public hearing from May third, twenty twenty-two. There will be a budget presentation. Borough Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I I jump into my slides, I did want to thank our CFO, Lori Majeski, who is here. In in a tile on your screen, listening, but I, the budget process has just gotten smoother and more easy. Since we brought her on board, so I just want to publicly thank her for that and. As I launch in and just to let the public know, this is the introduction I'll be giving an overview. If you have questions coming out of this, the materials will be made available on our website tomorrow, the the budget documents as well as my slides, so. Please feel free to reach out to myself or any of the members of councils, depending on where your area of interest is. And then we'll have our public hearing as. The, as indicated earlier, at I believe our May third meeting, so that's another opportunity to ask questions at that time, once you've had a chance. To review the budget materials. So I just wanted to kind of put my comments in perspective. I'm just going to provide a general overview. Tonight. So with that, I'm going to attempt to navigate more smoothly to my slides than I did the last time.
You got this, Terry.
All right, thank you. It was, I couldn't find the slide. So this, hopefully you're looking at a screen that says twenty twenty-two budget presentation. All right, so, and it's Tuesday, April fifth, I'm pleased to report. So as I mentioned, this is, I'm trying to kind of start out big, I'm going to follow down into kind of. Some of the specifics of the municipal budget, but I'm going to start with kind of the bigger picture, which is the overall tax levy. The levy is the amount we're going to raise. To cover the costs of not just municipal operations, but our schools, county costs. As well as our library statutory minimum, and I'll go into that in a little bit. But as you can see from this pie chart. Sixty-one percent of the pie of that fifty million change there. Is allocated to the public school system in the borough of Highland Park, and that's our Irving Bartle Middle School, High School. Twenty-seven percent of the pie goes to municipal operations and I'm going to drill into that wedge in a couple of minutes. So I'm just sticking at the top level here. Eleven percent combined goes to Middlesex County for their their. Services like roads, parks, we mentioned the Donaldson Park upgrades, Johnson Park has some work going on. Sheriff, you know, there's a lot of underlying services there, as well as the county open space. Tax that we contribute into and periodically do get funding for various local projects, as well as projects throughout the county. And lastly, I'll point out, there's a, the way the library is funded, there's a statutory minimum amount that's. Specified to us as to how much we must based on our our various factors that I won't go into. And the minimum amount that we had to fund this year was four hundred sixty-six thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars. However, we fund the library at a total of one million eighty-one thousand four hundred and seventy-nine. So in this chart you're looking at, I'm just talking about that one percent, which is the statutory minimum, just to make it clear. To see, so this is kind of where the tax dollars are distributed to. And again. Twenty-seven cents of every dollar goes toward our municipal operations, soup to nuts. And so what does that mean? And I, for those of you who have seen this presentation before, it's similar to prior years, I've updated all the numbers, but. A lot of people want to know how this affects them and what does that mean for your tax bill? So in Highland Park, the average property tax bill kind of for the average residential assessment is twelve thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars and seventy cents. And so that comes to about one thousand thirty-six per month. And so if you look at that, that same apportionment, you're talking about seven thousand six forty-three of that bill going to the schools. Eleven, just combining the two county numbers together. Goes to, or about a hundred and eleven dollars per month, goes to the county out of that bill. About ten bucks per month, go to that statutory minimum library requirement. And two hundred and seventy-eight dollars per month goes to all of those municipal services that again I'll talk about. So kind of one of the ways I think about it is, you know, that's roughly, you know, the size of my P S E and G bill. For for a month, you know, that's roughly what municipal services cost. In the borough of Highland Park with this budget that's before you. So just drilling down, I'll just provide a little bit of snapshot. I just want to get my cheat sheet handy. So again, I I I should mention that I should say the twenty twenty-two numbers are estimates because the county's budget hasn't been certified. Nor has the school budget, but I was working off of what they said were very solid numbers. nor has the school budget, but I'm I was working off of what they said were very solid numbers. So with this outlook, so I just wanted to make that point clear. So I have a little comparison here between twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. You can see the total amount to be raised by or the total levy go went up across all those areas by about six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. But a factor that has you have to consider is that the total assessed value also went up by about seven million dollars. That's the value of the entire borough, and that's kind of wrapped into what we'll be doing through the revaluation is that number will likely change once we get through the revow process, which is to give you trying to orient you to this. And what that meant is we're looking at a a property tax rate increase of point zero zero seven four. Or basically, on the average property tax bill for the year, an increase of ten dollars and seventy-nine cents or point oh nine percent. So that's, you know, this basically not a huge change being proposed in this budget when you look at the overall picture of all the sources that we're funding. Let me just make sure I don't have any notes on this. So moving on to the municipal portion of that budget, that the bar twenty, our, what was it? Make sure I get you the right number. Twenty-seven percent of that overall prior pie, the municipal portion is eighteen million, nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars and seven hundred and fifteen cents and seven hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-two cents, excuse me. So basically, that's the amount that we're proposing we need to run the borough this year. Twenty-seven percent of that is funding our public safety. That includes, you know, contractual increases in their in their salaries, et cetera. Sixteen percent goes towards general services and administration. That's from administration to recreation, aging, legal, planning, pretty much anything that isn't public safety, public works, or these other criteria, that's general services and administration. Finance. Sixteen percent of the wedge here is going to public works, which is garbage, recycling, buildings and grounds, roads. Ten percent are statutory. Pension, the PFRS and PERS are pension payments that we make annually. I don't have to make our FICA and unemployment payments that we have to make. So ten percent of the wedge goes to those things and ten percent are going to capital improvement and debt service to support the ongoing projects we have. Six percent goes to the library. Again, we're we're talking about it's one over a million dollars in total going to the library, but the amount over the statutory is six hundred and twelve thousand dollars and two hundred, six hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And one thing I I did differently this year because it was so striking. We have about six percent of of our budget this year are various grant projects we've got going on, coming to about a million dollars. So I think it's important to point that out. We're funding portions of our Woodbridge Avenue project through our rescue plan funds this year. We are, we got a very large grant for the NPP program this year, our River Trail Grant. There's a number, and then there's many more, big and small, and more to come, where we'll be applying for EV and charging infrastructure this year and hope to be awarded. So that's an area we've made a really concerted effort to pursue more aggressively, and it really shows in this budget to the point where it felt like if I didn't break it out, you'd say, why did everything go up so much? So I just wanted to point that out, just to kind of double that. When you look at total appropriations for the municipal budget, I they did go up by one point one million, however, five hundred plus thousand of that was in grants, so those are funds that are offset by revenue sources, not taxes. So I just wanted to make that point upfront. So total appropriations, again, this is the comparing last year to this year, what we're proposing is is this eighteen point nine million dollar budget, which is an increase over last year. A good chunk of that is due to grants, as well as some other items which I'll get into in a moment. But as I was saying, the amount raised by taxes, the the comparison between twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two is two hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars. So that's an important distinction to make because there are other revenue sources that offset some of the increase in appropriations. Again, I just I won't read the number aloud, but we did see our total assessed value for the municipality go up all this year, although now I see a change in my numbers. I got to double check that number now that I'm looking at this. I apologize. I will verify that. It did go up, I know that, but now I'm not sure about that number. I don't know if Lori can check me on that. And then what we're looking at now, I'm yes, okay. And then in terms of the municipal portion of your tax bill or the overall impact would be that it went up by nineteen dollars and sixty-three cents per year. You'll note I said, but the increase is only ten dollars previously, and the reason being is there were some decreases in county numbers, which basically made the overall impact on the overall tax bill less. So I just wanted to present to you that the municipal, there was an increase of nineteen sixty-three per year, but because the county numbers went down, the overall impact to the taxpayer went was closer to ten dollars on the average property bill. I do want to speak to appropriations a little bit more. I mentioned the grants, which we're very excited and will continue to enhance those items, but debt service did go up by about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Police salary and wages go went up by a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is contractual. Those are, you know, part of the negotiated agreements. We again have increased our commitment to building up the paid staff at the fire department by about sixty-five thousand dollars this year, so I just wanted to point that out. And then some of our statutory payments went up by about fifty-four thousand dollars. And lastly, but certainly not least, if you're Council President George, we also budgeted for another public works laborer in this year's budget, which is approximately thirty-five thousand dollars, not inclusive of benefits. So I wanted to give you a flavor of where some of this increase in appropriations comes from and and the the good purposes that it goes towards and the essential purposes it goes towards. But all in all, we're looking at the average municipal portion of the tax bill increasing by about point five nine percent with the budget that is proposed here. Just quickly want to just do a quick overview of the water and sewer utility budget. The total budget being proposed is five point six seven million. The water, the revenue sources is primarily what what are called water and sewer rents, but that's basically the quarterly billings for people's water bills, as well as we do get water and sewer connection fees periodically, but we don't rely on those to make our budget work. The key appropriations are our operations and maintenance contract. That's the USA Highland Park Middlesex Water Agreement that the ten-year contract that we awarded over a year ago. So that's the annual cost there. It's a seven hundred and forty-seven thousand water purchase, purchase of water, which we purchased from the CJA plant next door in Edison from Middlesex Water Company. We did see a fairly sizable rate increase this year, and we there'll be it was on the order of twenty percent. There will be another one about four percent next year, so we're going to be looking at our revenues very closely in the coming couple of quarters to just make sure, see how we're we're doing. That's a concern we had, and we don't want to not match our our water and sewer rents to the cost of the purchasing of water, as well as the treatment of the sewage, our costs with the Middlesex County Utilities Authority also went up this year. And the last major item is debt service, which is about four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. So basically, those items alone comprise eighty-three percent of our utility budget. There are other items, the day-to-day things like our meter reading equipment, purchase of meters on an ongoing basis, as well as emergency repairs that are also baked into this budget. But there are a number of really important capital projects, many of which you've heard Council President George speak of in prior months, but the Borough and Leaders Replacement Program might I I'm hoping, hoping that we'll be in a position to make an award at our next council meeting, because that's a really big initiative whereby we're replacing all of our borough own meters throughout the the borough, which will improve our efficiency of reading and accuracy of reading. So really, that's going to be a a big project. The lead service line replacement program, which came up earlier in the meeting, will be developing that lines of the plan and starting to figure out the way we're going to fund that plan, and that's a big project for us this year. We also are as part, we weren't, we decided not to resurface Woodbridge, have the county resurface Woodbridge Avenue without first replacing one of the oldest section of water main in the borough. So we'll also be as part of in advance of that resurfacing that I mentioned, will be replacing the water main over there. So that's coming this year, as well as we'll be rolling out our GIS Geographic Information System-based Asset Management Plan this year with the support of Middlesex Water. That's one of the fundamentals that they've been supporting us on. So that's the utility budget in a nutshell. Again, all of the material, the slides, once I double check those numbers, because I'm I'm concerned I may have made a slip on the total assessed value, so I'll verify those numbers. We'll paste, put this up on our website, both the slides and the budget documents themselves, and I would encourage everybody to look at them and certainly feel free to reach out to me with any questions. And we we do have the public hearing coming up on May third, where people can voice their their thoughts on that at that time. So that's that's what I had prepared this evening, Mayor. Let me know if you need anything else.
Okay, thank you very much. Good job on that. And I want to
Very good job, Terry.
Yeah. Also want
Very good job, Terry. It was it was clear and everybody could see, and I like I like how it was presented in that presentation because it's easy to read and easy to follow. Thank you.
And I also want to thank the Finance Department to work very hard with you and the Tax Department, so good work on that. Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the introduction of the twenty-twenty-two Main Street Highland? I'm sorry, 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 sorry. Okay, I'm ahead of myself here. Terry just did the Borough presentation, so now may I have a motion to adopt or reject the twenty-twenty-two municipal budget on first reading by title?
So moved.
Moved.
So you got those two? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes, good job.
Councilman George?
Excellent job. Half a percent on the municipal raise, and we actually, we did that by shrinking DPW as well as hiring another person. That's real planning for the real world. Thank you. Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Just thank you very much to Terry and the finance team. Excellent work. And yes.
Councilmember? Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes, and I also like to thank Terry from the work session. That number was lowered. I always like to see a low. I'm sorry, Terry. We went back and forth a little bit about that budget about lowering it, but I'm I'm glad to see where it is. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Now. May I have a motion? I'm sorry. My sheet says introduction of the twenty-twenty-two Main Street Highland Park Budget by Title and Set Public Hearing for May third, twenty-twenty-two. May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yeah.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda items. May I have a motion to adopt items number fifteen A through fifteen I?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Next, I have the great honor of appointing the following volunteers. H. James Polos as Emergency Management Coordinator. Iam Cohen, Laurel Kornfeld, Mason Resnick, and Valerie Dratch Whiteman to the Public Information Committee. May I have a motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
So I just want to say the Public Information Committee is very near and dear to my municipal heart. My very warm, large municipal heart, because it is, it was my foray into into municipal government here in Highland Park, and I worked closely with then Councilwoman Brolmentler, and so it's really good to see that you that that this team is still intact, and I I look forward to just their 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 advice and their presence moving forward, because I know it's been it's been a little quiet the last few years, so, yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Very good. It's now time for the second public discussion session. Each speaker has three minutes, but may comment on any topic. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and will offer a thirty-second warning and then indicate when three minutes has lapsed. The session will wrap up by nine PM. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad or select the raise hand button on the application. Please unmute yourself by pressing star six. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us who you are, first and last name, as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on the agenda, please press star nine or the raise hand button now. Borough Administrator, would you please announce if anyone would like to speak?
Sure, Mayor. I see seventeen attendees and eight hands raised. I'll just point out it's any item, whether it's on the agenda or not. So first hand raised is Carl Pry. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Mary Forsberg. I have two different questions, but I'll I'll do the first one first. I thought, having sat through many, many and participated in many budget hearings, I thought Terry did a really good job presenting Highland Park's budget in a very simple way that most people can understand, which is really important because budgets are very complicated issues. The one thing that I am very curious about is how does the budget account for the pilot for Thirty-One River Road? And the money that you are pledging to give, the hundred thousand dollar pilot, that the money you are pledging to give to the school board? Where does, how does that transaction taste take place? And how do you reconcile the hundred thousand dollar pilot in terms of the two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars in property taxes that Borough redevelopment attorney Baumann said would have been assessed against the against Thirty-One River Road?
Okay, so
Where does the pilot show up?
So Borough Administrator, do you want to take that, or I know you said that our finance person is here. I don't know if Lori would like to speak to that.
I I think I can speak to it in in a general way. The project only recently got its COs and is starting to lease up, so and is starting to lease up. So that triggers, you know, there's a, in a set evaluation and we're s- in the process of setting up the pilot. I'm working with uh, Joe Baumann and the CFO on that. Actually, we've been trading emails in the last few weeks now that the project's kind of up and running. So we'll be establishing that and I, I can certainly offer a, a more thoughtful answer once I've had a chance to catch up with Joe because this is the first time since I've been here that we're setting up a payment move taxes program um, uh, from scratch. So we're, we're in the process of doing that. We want to get it right. And I don't want to, I'll get more into it than that at this time because I'm not prepared to.
Okay.
But it's not in this budget document. The pilot payment is not anticipated in this current budget.
Okay. Do, do you want me to, um, ask my second question? You want me to wait and let other people speak?
Um, I don't know. Uh, borough clerk, do we, does Mary still have time on her three minutes?
Is about forty-one seconds.
I'll wait.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Okay, next.
All right, Mary, I'll ask you to just re-raise your hand uh, in a moment because I, I have to shuffle you down. Otherwise I get confused. Next up is Dan Stern Cardinal. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Dan Stern Cardinal, two twenty-one Harper Street. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I just want to comment in favor of, uh, bringing back the town tables in a permanent way, uh, like a lot of people is really disappointed when we didn't get them back, uh, this past Friday. But I'm happy to hear that the process to make them permanent is moving forward. And I just want to, um, just say I hope that we can expedite that process in the, eh, in any way possible, just do it as fast as we can to get those back. It was really great having that public space all throughout last year. It was always busy. Um, and I'm not sure, uh, if everybody has seen this, but um, they're, uh, starting late last week. There's a petition going around, uh, in support of it that has well over three hundred signatures on it now, which is a lot more than the anti-town tables petition has garnered in several months. So, um, there is robust public support for bringing those town tables back and opening up those streets to all kinds of uses in a permanent way. So thank you for doing the work on that.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, anybody else?
Yes, Mayor. Uh, we're still at eight hands. Mr. Castro, you are up next. Please give us your name and address.
Yes, Marcos Castro, four three two Montgomery.
Okay.
Uh, I am, I want to comment uh, to say that I am against closing any streets in town, uh, whether temporary or permanently. Um, I, I understand that that was done in the past because of the health crisis. And I, and it was supposed to help some of the businesses in town. But the health crisis is gone. And I hate to see that something that was, that came in as a temporary measure for a health crisis is now going to become a permanent decision. Uh, I'm not understanding who made that decision. I know there's many of us against the idea. And, you know, if you were to take, uh, the previous, uh, speaker, three hundred people in a town of ten thousand people is not really that, that many. So, and there are many of us that don't, uh, like the idea. Now, be, I want to be clear. We want to have tables and we want to have a public space. That's great. Let's do it. Let's just not use our streets for that. Use a different property. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Terry?
Uh, I've got someone named Lisa up next. If you could state your full name and address.
Hi, uh, this is Michael Nos and Lisa Kaplan at one, two, three South Adelaide Avenue. Uh, so I just want to voice my support for reopening the tables, uh, pretty much echoing everything Daniel Stern Cardinal said earlier. Uh, as well as wanting to thank Terry for, for that budget, uh, presentation is very well put together. Thank you so much for that. And Lisa would also like to speak.
Yeah, hi. Um, I also wanted to voice my support for the, the town tables. Um, it's really brought a sense of community. And the only other time I really feel a sense of community in this town is during the farmer's market on Fridays. Um, and so I appreciate all the efforts you're doing to bring back the, the town tables. And I also um, highly suggest that in the meantime, while we're waiting for that to happen, to do anything you can to make the town square where the farmer's market is uh, more appealing to sit at during the rest of the week. Because right now it's, it's really just a, a parking lot and it's, it's not at all uh, an appealing place to sit. Um, so anything you can do to make that more appealing, maybe it's having food trucks during the, the rest of the week. So people can, you know, have lunch there, anything, anything at all, um, but, you know, be appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you, Michael and Lisa. Terry, do we have more hands?
Yes, we do. I've got a phone number, last four digits, six, seven, zero, eight. If you could tell us your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is John Buco. I live at four one Byron Place in Somerset, one of the most beautiful little towns in the world. And I'm calling tonight because I'd like to raise an important issue that I think all the, uh, residents of Highland Park should know. I think it's hypocritical to counsel to try to load up Highland Park with a bunch of pot shops thinking that's a good way to make money. But in reality, you're spending so much of Highland Park's taxpayers' monies by making residents pay for the mayor's healthcare insurance premiums and for the representative Foster's healthcare insurance premiums. When I asked the mayor about this previously, she defended this by saying that she and Foster were grandfathered for this perk for some reason, and that taxpayers only pay for part of the healthcare costs for her and Mr. Foster. While the, the part of the Highland Park taxpayers are paying is huge. And it's way more than the mayor and the rep- representative Foster are chipping in for, that's for sure. Public records show the mayor and representative Foster are paying fifteen dollars for either a general practitioner doctor or even a specialist. And three dollars for generic prescriptions and fifteen dollars for brand name drugs. The Highland Park taxpayers are paying, are you ready for this? Ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and ten dollars by the end of two thousand twenty-two. That's just the last three years. That's not counting any past, uh, premiums. So I have three things to say now. Instead of trying to make money by bringing in pot shops and breaking federal law, you should each pay for your own healthcare premium, just like every el- every other person does, and save the town some serious money. That's ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and ten dollars, just in three years. And I would like some answers. Please tell me why the mayor's position and representative Foster's are grandfathered to have the taxpayers pay this. And, uh, please tell me when you guys are going to start paying your own healthcare. And I'd like to quote Joe Strummer from The Clash. He always says, it doesn't matter what kind of government you have, politicians are always going to be driving limousines. Well, in this case, Highland Park's, uh, citizens are paying for the mayor's Cadillac healthcare plan. Thank you very much.
Okay.
We're not the clampdown. I'll quote Clash.
Um, okay, uh, borough administrator, do we have any other hands raised?
Yes, Mayor, we have six hands raised at this point. And next up is Ethan Schoolman.
Please state your name and address.
Hi, uh, it's Ethan Schoolman. I'm at four twenty-three Harrison Avenue. Um, so I wanted to echo the comments made by, uh, Daniel Stern Cardinal and some other folks about supporting the, bringing the town tables back permanently, closing up that block, um, uh, on South Third. Um, there's a lot of great economic development reasons for it. Such an important place to gather when, uh, and I think the, you got a feeling of community there, we stated earlier. Certainly, I certainly felt that as well. Um, as a parent of young kids, I'm very conscious of the safety issues. I mean, there's, I think there's might be, it, it's a very kid, kid full corner with the Yellow Brick Road and the coffee shop and the tea shop. A lot of teenagers like hanging out there these days, which is great. Um, but it's just, you know, the cars come by there pretty quick and little kids dart out into traffic. And it was really great when I didn't have to worry about, um, looking both ways, you know, in the same way. Um, I had my kids there for coffee or ice cream or whatever else was, or the bubble tea, I guess. Um, anyway, I, I want to say something else too. And, and I want to thank the council for, you know, for, for moving this forward. I know there was a, a bit of a hiccup, which is very natural, these kinds of things. But I'm really glad that, um, this is getting moved forward, um, expeditiously. Um, I wanted to suggest also that, and this is a kind of a humble suggestion. I was just thinking about, you know, why people feel strongly that this space should be, um, um, closed, the traffic, how the tables put there. I mean, it was a very organically special space. It was a, it was a, a, a bright spot at a very dark time. And I think that, that council and, and the mayor could do something really wonderful by, um, not just by recreating that space, but by dedicating that space, um, to the people who sacrificed, the first responders, the teachers, the essential workers, people who, uh, you know, sadly lost their lives or lost loved ones. Um, I was just, I ruminating on this, thinking of something like, you know, pandemic heroes plaza, you know, or something like that, uh, you know, space to commemorate that we all came together and did our best for our town at a really hard time. And I think that, um, uh, you know, a lot of local government is, you know, passing ordinances, taking sure that the trains run on time and the money goes in the right places. But, um, there's also a very special function, which is to help people remember what really matters. And this is an opportunity to do that. So thank you very much.
Ethan, that's a wonderful idea and thank you for sharing it with us. Okay, borough administrator?
Uh, phone number ending four, 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 five is next. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Lois Leving, North Second Avenue. Uh, where do I start? Okay, closing up the roadways is, um, it causing idle, extra idling, extra go rounds for those of us. It's a tiny town with a very small grid. Engineers laid out a hundred years ago. It needs its true streets. The police, uh, have to zip through the fire department. Somebody said the fire truck came the wrong way or through the clo- yes, I guess the wrong way on North Fourth. They have a photo of it, uh, last year. There's more to it than just let's get together. Okay, let's get together. That's right. New York Times, March, um, thirteenth, is it? Yes, Sunday. Living in Englewood, former residents wanted a big, bigger town feel than, uh, that was the draw for the residents, Mr. and Mrs. Dabby, both seventy-four, who were ready for a more active community than Highland Park, New Jersey, where they lived for forty years. Quote, "We were looking for a community with a sense of life to it," Miss Dabby said. "How you think chairs and benches and tables, which are never, North Fourth was never filled, except on the weekends. It was empty. It was, we thought it was Pino's private little restaurant." Okay, so something different is needed, more than restaurants and tables and chairs. Mayor Merrill tried it around the year two thousand for a cultural museum theater type center. Okay, not yet. New Hope, PA, as everyone knows, has paddle boats, has steam engine rides and, and lots of shops and restaurants and tattoo parlors. And, and who has a daylight, say a mono rail going from River Road over near Johnson Park, uh, a vehicle over, except of course Newark Airport, and to and from daylight to Rutgers or to New Brunswick? And please ask, I hope it's okay, I mentioned Mary Forsberg once suggested to me a casino boat, a party boat or a barge somewhere docked temporarily, few hours, uh, off Donaldson Park. Let people party, come and go, and then be gone. You get rent from that. We must think outside the box. We need more interesting things than just restaurants. And as per the agenda, did I hear someone abstain during the vote, and I might not have heard it correctly? For the lease on two twelve and one oh one Raritan Avenue, and may I ask why? And also on the, uh, consent agenda that was just passed, number fifteen G, I think it is, uh, sixty-five Woodbridge Avenue, who is getting some sort of adjustment or probably a refund? Thank you.
Okay, there was a log pact in there. Um, so, um, uh, Terry, do you, uh, do you want to talk about the address on Woodbridge? Okay.
I, I, I'll, we could go in reverse order, I guess. Uh, so sixty-five Woodbridge Avenue. Uh, there, that was a property where we had identified and malfunctioning customer-owned meter. We estimated the bills, uh, for about a year. And actually, the resolution goes into great detail and exactly what's going on. So if you're really interested, I, I encourage you to read it because I've spent a lot of time writing it. Uh, essentially, we got the, the customer installed a new meter. We got some updated, uh, almost a year's worth of readings on the new meter whereby we, when we look back at our estimates, especially because the estimates took place during the heart of the pandemic in two thousand twenty. We thought it was reasonable to adjust downward the bill based on the meter readings from the new meter as opposed to relying on estimates from what we believe to have been a, um, this malfunctioning meter. I will say this is the first time we've done that. I've had situations where our estimates came in lower. And I've had times where our estimates came in higher, as was the, uh, the case in this case. And we always uh, handle it fairly with the customers. So that's what's, what's going on, uh, at sixty-five, uh, Woodbridge. And I believe council president, you were the abstention?
Uh, yeah, I abstained from, uh, the vote on, uh, two twelve and one oh one. Uh, the lease to two, one oh one is to the Lower Raritan Watershed Partnership. I'm general counsel and, um, one of the original members, uh, of the Lower Raritan Watershed Partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Who owns sixty-five Woodbridge Avenue? Is it one private rest, uh, is it a private residence or a restaurant or a pizza parlor?
I'm.
Um, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know-
It's a business, Mayor.
It's a business, okay. Um, all right. Thank you, Lois. Um, and, um, Terry, do we have any other hands raised?
Yes, I do see we have six hands raised. Also, Mayor, um, would it be okay if we, um, I told Lori I would I ask if she could leave the meeting after, uh, the budget introduction. It's, it doesn't seem like I'm getting a lot of questions on it. Would it be okay if, uh, Lori?
As long as you feel capable of answering any question.
And, and again, I remind everybody on, on May third, we do have our public hearing on the matter where Lori will be there as well.
Okay. Good night, Lori, and thank you for your work.
Good night. Thank you.
Sorry, I, I meant to do that before we got into the public comment. Uh, it looks like MSB F R C T is up next, Mayor. Please state your name and address.
Yeah, hi, uh, Mary Botion, seven oh nine Madison. Um, uh, two things I just want to touch on. Uh, one, again, you know, the presentation on the budget was very clear, Terry. That was really great, very helpful. Um, but I do want to step back just for a second regarding the fact that the lease agreements are not included on an ordinance when it actually is being presented to the public and up for a vote. Um, and even in the agenda tonight, um, where it refers to a resolution for twenty-two ninety-four on page fifteen of our agenda, there is no such reference saying contact the clerk for a copy of the lease. Um, so, you know, really to be consistent and to be really, you know, clear to the public, anytime the relevant issue is raised in these documents, that should be made clear where to go to get the leases. Um, it didn't work tonight. You mentioned, oh, it worked. It didn't work tonight. It doesn't appear anywhere. And I looked all over the webpage for it. I couldn't find it. Only out of desperation did I contact you. Um, and you kindly provided it. So it really should be listed in these documents each time they appear. Um, secondly, I, I want to discuss, um, the fact that, uh, you know, as a resident, uh, I'm one of the many folks that remains very, um, unhappy that the seven members of council have voted themselves, uh, an ordinance that brings in pot shops and marijuana dispatch offices. Uh, even though these marijuana operations are against the federal law, um, via the Controlled Substances Act. Um, and, uh, we, you know, we don't appreciate that our council members are breaking any laws, uh, including federal laws. And the question I have is, if you were in our shoes, um, you were a resident sitting out here and an ordinance was passed that you completely disagreed with, that was against federal law, um, that the council members just were not budging in any way, you know, what would you do? We're the ones sitting out here that are facing this. You're the ones that are imposing it on us. But if the tables were turned, you know, what would you do? Please tell us what you would, what you would do if you were the resident in our shoes at this point. Thank you very much. Please tell us.
No, Mary, first of all, I'm not going to answer a hypothetical question, but I am going to ask the borough attorney who is with us tonight to explain, um, how the council can move forward with an ordinance that you claim breaks the law.
You mean a cannabis ordinance?
Yes.
First, I should comment on the earlier ordinance mentioned on page twenty-four of the packet. In paragraph three in the ordinance, it talks about where you can get the leases for Raritan Avenue. So the comment that it's not reflected in the ordinance is incorrect. Secondly, there have been some cases, a case decided here in New Jersey recently, which does, makes it clear that proceeding. The way the borough is proceeding is authorized by constitutional amendment. And the two hundred and twenty-five page piece of legislation that dropped it by this state. We are not violating the law and you can proceed with the steps you've taken under the ordinance. And permitting the retail and the sale of cannabis in the borough is perfectly legal. And I do not believe you are violating any federal law.
Thank you, Borough Attorney. All right, Terry, do we have any more hands?
Hi, yes, Mayor, we have five hands raised and I'll just point out we're at nine twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have not been looking at the clock. Do I need the count? How many more hands raised?
I believe we have five.
Five. Do, um, does anyone on council object to us allowing the five people to speak and then closing the open comments? Okay, so Terry will continue with those five, but no more.
All right, next I see Milagros Aguayo. Please state your name and address for the record.
You hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Milagros Aguayo, one two Southern Avenue in Highland Park. Yes, my family and I don't want any commercial marijuana businesses here in Highland Park. So I have a question. Please if somebody can answer my question. Why do Mayor and Council want to proceed with their marijuana business plan? When marijuana remains against federal law under the Controlled Substances Act list of scheduled one drops. And residents and experts have been clear that it has great potential detriment to our town. Thank you.
All right, Milagros, the Borough Attorney, I think, addressed the issue of. Cannabis retail being legal in Highland Park and in the state of New Jersey. So I believe that answers your primary question.
All right, Eric Lipton, you're next.
Hi, my name is Eric Lipton. I live at one, two, three South Adelaide Avenue. I think I heard some neighbors here earlier. I wanted to speak out now in support for two things you guys are doing. I'm really encouraged to hear the support for returning the tables to Third and Fourth Avenue. A half block and half of a half of a block for pedestrians is a wonderful thing. Just that small amount of room opened up our town to pedestrians and walkers and visitors in a way. That just the benches don't do as well on the sidewalk. It's, it's a cramped situation. When they were out in the street, there were kids running. As you guys know, I've had some trouble with cars. And being a pedestrian. And any place where people can be safe from cars. Yes, I know a lot of people depend on cars in town. And that's fine. There are so many other streets. There are so many other ways to get around. Then, then those two positions. It worked really well. I love Ethan's suggestion of, of considering. The reason why and keeping some of that spirit as we, as we move away from there, I, I, I. For one, would like to remember the sacrifices made. We were amazing as a town. And I'm so proud to be part of this town. Another thing I'm proud of is our marijuana ordinance. I'm glad it's perfectly legal. We knew it was legal. It is the right direction to go for the town. One of the reasons I can walk is because of medicinal marijuana. It is not a gateway to unholy terrors. It is the reality that we've all been living in. Let's just, if it's legal, it can be sold. We have not descended into madness over liquor. I thank you for that and for addressing the return of the tables. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Borough Administrator?
Next up is Alexandra Palmer. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Alexandra Palmer, three, three, seven Harper Place in Highland Park. I wanted to speak up in support for the town tables. I, when I was choosing where to live with my partner several years ago, we had a few different options. And the reason we chose Highland Park is because we consider it a walking town. We consider it a place we can meet with friends in the community. In fact, I was a little sad because this weekend we were supposed to have knitting club at the town tables, but they weren't there. So it was also raining, to be fair. But we, you know, in the last summer, last spring, we were able to spend time with our friends outside. Especially our young children, enjoy the community and enjoy having a place to live. I consider myself in the community that is affected by the, where the tables are placed. I live between Third and Fourth. And so, yes, it did take an extra second in the morning for me to decide which way I was going to exit my house. But it also gave, put a big smile on my face, thinking that my neighbors were hopefully enjoying their morning coffee or having a chat with friends. So I am appreciative of the work you're doing to make the tables permanent. I think they're a great feature for our town. They make it a walkable, inviting, special place where we can gather. And I also have to say, I love the idea of designating the space to, for, to think about the people who were truly heroes during the pandemic. So thank you very much and good night.
Thank you. Okay, Terry.
Yep, next I see Abby Stern Cardinal. Please state your name and address.
Hi, this is Abby Stern Cardinal. I live on Harper Street. I also am strongly in favor of bringing back the town tables. But I did want to address a earlier comment and just remind everybody where, where we are in this pandemic a little bit more. There was a comment earlier saying that the health crisis is over. I know we're, you know, looking at different designations. But I just want to remind everybody of the feeling that you may have had when you got your first, second or booster dose of the vaccine. And how much of a relief that might have felt, maybe the first time you went to a restaurant, the first time you went, you know, to a public gathering. And just remind you that parents of young children and people who are immunocompromised do not have that relief yet. Parents of, I know many, many parents of young kids who have not started going back to restaurants. Some have and many haven't. There, the town tables were a sanctuary for us. It was a place where our kids could run around. There are parks, but they don't have the same kind of seating. And to be honest, my kids can't sit down and eat when there's a park right next to them. So it's not, it's, it's nice, but it's, it's hard to, you know, focus on eating. But they were able to eat and then go play while we chatted with our friends and it felt normal. It felt real. And on one hand, the pandemic isn't over and that's still something we need. And on the other hand, that's a space that we can have long-term post-pandemic as well. To spend with our friends, let our kids run around. There aren't other places like that in town and we need that. We need to have that going forward. Both during this still, you know, existing pandemic and then after as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. All right, I, I think we were getting, we have two more people.
We have our final speaker, Carl Pray, most likely Mary Forsberg with her part two.
Hi, Mary Forsberg again. This is something different than what other people have been talking about. On February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, I, I sent an Oprah request to the borough. Asking for a list of the names and addresses of people who have either been sent copies of the December tenth, two thousand and twenty-two redevelopment RFP. Or who themselves have requested copies of the redevelopment RFP. I was told that the information was not available to me. Because if disclosed, it would give an advantage to competitors. I think you know that I'm not a competitor for any kind of redevelopment in Highland Park. I know that a list exists because this, the response to this question I had showed that on December sixth, sixth. The Borough Administrator sent an email to Council Bowman, Council of Redevelopment, Council Bowman. With her list of possible developers and asked him to send her a copy of the individuals he had sent the RFP to. That's six days after that you guys passed the ordinance. So clearly, there has, there have been people in the line. Looking for information on the redevelopment. I think this is inappropriate. I think that transparency is very important. And I think that the names of interested parties, developers who are interested in changing the face of Highland Park. Should be made public. And I think that their names should be published on the borough's website. I don't see why they would. I mean, it's a competitive thing. And if they all knew, know who they're competed against, it seems to me it's not a bad thing. I also think that as residents in this town, we deserve, we, we should be able to see. The kind of work that anyone that you people are considering to redesign the face of Highland Park. We should be able to see the kind of work that they do. I myself was not impressed at all about the festival street and axe throwing and all of that stuff. I also know that a lot of people are not happy about a parking garage, which I know is not off the table. And four and five story buildings and moving the farmer's market and closing South Worth to accommodate it. So I'd like to suggest that you make this information public about who you are talking to. And let us know the kind of work that any developer who's going to redevelop Highland Park. Does, because I think there are a lot of people who have a lot at stake here. And I don't, I'm pretty sure that most of you do not live anywhere near the CBD.
Hi.
And I think that we deserve that kind of information. The one other thing.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mary, the clerk just called your time.
I just have one, one more comment. And that is, today you approved another acquisition in. The land behind the gun shop and in the. Ordinance, whatever it was, you show that you're willing to use condemnation. I think that, you know, if you're willing to condemn property for track A, what makes it? Why would you not condemn property elsewhere when you want to do development? Because a lot of rumors are floating around about what you're planning to do. So I would like, I would like a little more transparency in this issue.
Thank you, Mary. And as a rule of thumb, I would not believe rumors here or anyplace else. You can always feel free to contact the Borough Administrator, myself or any council member.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, yes.
I'm sorry, we got two brief messages that were asked to be read into the second public comment tonight. If you'd like me to do that, I'll be pleased to do that. First message is, my name is Alexis Thomason. I'm a fairly new resident of Highland Park. I live at one, one, five Exeter Street. I'm a professional musician and music educator. I'm the author of the petition that asked the town council to keep the property located in track C designated for the farmer's market. I'm also very much for the return of the town tables. It's important for me that the council, the mayor and the fellow citizens know. That there are many of us who both want to keep the farmer's market where it is and also see the return of tables on South Third and Fourth. My part is because I believe this is a town that generally loves gathering. You have much evidence of that and how well utilized the market area is on market days. You have evidence of that as to how well utilized the town tables are on a pleasant day. Mayor, please bring back the tables. The street closures are only half closures. And what we get in return is the ability to enjoy ourselves while more readily supporting any neighborhood establishments. However, also please consider having the market pushed to South Third will only create more street closures. An inconvenience for folks who live there. Keeping the market where it is, which is our defective town square. And bringing the town tables back in a way that does not overburden our fellow citizens is what we support. And there's finally one other very brief comment from Nikki Tossing. I noted with display, dismay rather, that the borough's plan to close a lane on North Fourth Avenue. North Fourth and Second Avenues are the only through streets that connect with Cleveland Avenue. Third and Fifth Avenues require detours and are of a great inconvenience for north and south residents. Returning home as well as for delivery people. Concrete barriers are a hazard to pedestrians and to cars, businesses of push trash bins into the street, making it a further hazard. Delivery trucks, a double park in front of businesses forcing cars to either wait for the truck drivers to return or try to squeeze by. Sidewalk on the block on North Fourth is extra wide and has accommodated tables and chairs for some years. There's no place to place seating on the road where it often sits unused, other than during the warmest weather. Those are the two statements, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much for reading them. Okay. So at this point, I'm going to ask, we, we do have a work session. Scheduled and. And I'm sorry, but on my agenda, I don't see any topics on the work session. There are none? Okay. And I do, did mention at the beginning of the meeting that we will be going into executive session to discuss possible litigation. So I'm going to ask the council members to take a five-minute break. And then Terry, I believe Terry, it came from you, the link to the exec session meeting. Let's meet back here at nine, I don't know, nine thirty-six, thirty-seven, if that's okay with all of you. Okay, so thank you to our residents for their comments tonight. Have a wonderful evening and we'll talk with you soon. Bye, everyone.
We're going to be on a separate link then for that meeting.
Correct.
Okay, great.
You all got that earlier today, so just when you're done with.
That's why I was wondering what it was for. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay. Good night, Highland Park.